Ledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Trustee Paulie.
President.
Trustee Lappin.
Here.
Clerk Palavich here. Treasurer Ellery Summers. Trustee Crowe.
Also.
Both excused.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Here.
Supervisor Skibby.
Here. At this point in time, is there, I have an addition to the agenda. I know that it was already emailed to all board members, media, et cetera. Oh, I didn't make it to media?
But it is on the website.
On our website as well. And that will be under new business. It will be a new item fourteen, and that is the Graham Motor and Generator Service quote before you. And then department reports will become fifteen. Are there any other additions, corrections, or substitutions to the amended agenda as presented? Now I'll entertain a motion to adopt the amended agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there support?
Yes.
It's been moved and supported. Further discussion? All those in favor of adopting the amended agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose the same. Agenda adopted. This is the first opportunity for public comment. There is anybody online that has any public comment, please use the bottom ask bar. To either raise your hand or send us a message so that we can acknowledge you and your comment. Again, this is the first opportunity for public comment. If there's none online, which there seems to be none, we will move forward to the payment of the bills. Is there a motion to make payment of the bills? We have a motion on the table to make payment of the bills. Is there support?
Also.
It's been moved and supported. Any further discussion? Saying none. Roll call please.
Clerk Palavich, yes. Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Paulie.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Moving forward to the minutes of April twenty fifth, twenty twenty two, a regular scheduled meeting. Are there any corrections or modifications to the minutes presented? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as they are presented.
So moved.
We have a motion on the table to approve the minutes and support by trustee Reiner. To approve the minutes of April twenty fifth, twenty twenty two, regular scheduled meeting. Further discussions? None. All those in favor of approving the minutes of April twenty fifth signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose the same. Minutes have been approved. Moving forward to correspondence, we have the planning commission minutes of April eleventh, twenty twenty two, and also a Opina County opportunity to comment. With that being said, I'll entertain a motion to receive and file.
I'll make that motion.
A motion on the table to receive and file. Is there support? Support. It's been moved and supported. Any further discussion? Saying none. All those in favor of receiving and filing the correspondence signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose the same. There are, there is no old business to address moving forward into new business. Number one, revenue allocation ordinance one fifty. Trustee Paulie, you had asked for this to be on the agenda. Do you have any comments to start the discussion?
Just basically would like to see this go to some sort of a special fund that is away from our everyday operating funds. Till we find at a further date that we can see where we may want this money to go to support this fund and our marijuana.
With that being said, clerk.
I think we'll have to have a special GL that the revenue will go into, so it will be tracked, our revenue in BSNA.
Would that include both permit fees and state revenue? Are those between?
We would have to check with the auditors and see if it needs to be separate.
Yeah, by chart of accounts.
Right.
Someplace somehow that this, this money is totally kept separate, that we will be doing something with it other than going to the general fund.
Yeah. So, yeah, the answer to that, I mean, any expenditures, utilization, deutilization of said funds would be board approved anyways. So if, if we figure out by the chart of accounts which GLs to correspond to the revenue streams, a bank account can easily be.
Like another savings.
Another savings account potentially, although it's not something where you just want to have a million different savings accounts.
And that's something the treasurer would have to do.
But I, I look at this as it's going to be another program where there's going to be income and there's going to be outgoing. And so we have a good track record of all of that and that those funds.
So is it you want those funds designated for certain expenditures? I'm not sure what you're saying, or?
That they'll be put in a place where we can determine later on, once we get further into this marijuana, where these funds would like to go.
Hey, I, I think if I understand.
Yes, yes.
Do I understand you, you, you said something about expenses. Do you anticipate expenses then that would?
I, I don't know. I don't, I don't think we know if there's going to be any expenses, but I would assume there's probably going to be some.
Well, then I guess the best, oh, trustee.
I, I'm just, the question is, would this, would this look like an enterprise fund of some sort?
It's, I guess the, the best recourse to this, this quandary is to actually pass it by our, our auditors and see what other municipalities are doing for GL designation and how they're actually utilizing the revenue streams in, in keeping them separated from any other general fund revenue. But I think it's always been this board's intent that any expenditures downstream, of course, would be all board approved. So.
And, and it's a budgeting issue, is it not?
Any expenditure over five hundred has to come up front of this board anyways.
Yeah. So, Mr. Gold.
Russ, you jogged my memory on one thing when you asked it, permit fees. There's an application fee and a renewal application fee. And do you remember, Nathan, there may be a statutory provision saying those fees are for your time and effort.
Yeah.
Making sure there's compliance.
Yeah, the, the compliance component.
Might be restricted.
Those are, that would be very similar to that of a scenario that we're currently in with the liquor law enforcement, which has designated revenue streams from state. But there again, I mean.
And we use that with our general fund. We track
Yeah.
The money that comes in for the liquor inspections and the money that we pay out regarding the liquor. It's all done in BSNA.
But I can envision that as we move along with this, we're probably going to need potentially a cannabis, marijuana, whatever you want to call it, committee that's going to be involved in some of these things. It's going off the back of the board, but I can see that coming down the road.
I guess I don't know what the committee would be doing.
Determining potential expenditures. I think, I mean, let's, I guess, my position with this topic of business is let's throw this across the bow of our auditors and see where the GL construction needs to be in accordance with our wonderful state and our current accounts.
I'll connect with Chelsea and Jim.
I would think that MTA may have something that you could look at as well. And I know that they've got the, the blog. And if we've got a separate fund or a separate line item for liquor inspection, I wonder if it couldn't sort of mimic or, or mirror or be sort of laden that.
We have this as a department.
Exactly. And so there again, just let, let the, the chart of accounts and our auditors kind of determine the record keeping part of it and the board as, as a whole. I don't see the potential need for committees, but the board, like Michelle had stated, anything that would be an expenditure over five hundred dollars would be before this board. I guess we can play by ear of how, what we actually see as time progresses with revenue streams. But we can get clarification for, for the next meeting. I think we're already doing some paperwork, getting, getting ready for our upcoming audit. But pick their brain between our auditors and the chart of accounts.
I have a question, and it's just more of how, how, look for how it functions, right? I guess how it functions rather than, but as Steve just tweet the question here. When we do liquor inspections, are we funding the state liquor inspector? Are we funding someone that we hire?
So historically, what it has been on, I'm getting ready to kind of start some field work this in interim. The state pays us just roughly eleven thousand dollars and change to do inspections, basically on their behalf. And so that is, I don't know if they're even comparable really in my conversations thus far with liquor control versus cannabis. I don't know if at that level, what that would look like, but that is actually a revenue from, directly from the state.
And, and, and these are fees that we're going to charge and then be responsible for directly as opposed to as a delegate of the state.
We, the only fee that we would have the opportunity to charge would be a determination of what our annual inspection fee will be for said licensures. It's up to five thousand dollars per licensure, any of the six licensures, not just dispensaries.
Right.
Um, so that it would be a recommendation as we move forward is that we would charge five thousand dollars annually for inspection fees. Now that rides concurrent with now what the state has determined for their allocations of their degenerated funds at the state level of what, fifty six thousand and change, up from twenty eight thousand and change. So they doubled that disbursement and that's a direct payment from the state to the municipalities. So I think Jim and Chelsea can probably steer us in the right and then overlay it with.
And, and those monies have no strings attached, as I understand. That's more like a revenue sharing thing or something. I don't know.
There, there are no strings attached. Now with the liquor control, they want to say that's part of that dispersment of money from the state is they want to see that we're going out and justifying that, long and short. So I think we can kind of come back to this topic, but we'll.
I want to plant the seed.
Yeah. I think we're going to be talking about it in budgeting. I really do.
Yeah. Well, it's, it's going to be new to us. This is going to be one, determine what GLs and how we have to account between our auditor and state. And then also make sure that it's in the proper format by chart, or chart of accounts, that we just went through a massive conversion. So once those are determined and we start actually having some, some revenue streams to have a discussion about, then we can, we can address that.
So, so one final thought. In addition to any other, any annual fees that, that the township will at least currently get, what about the tax revenue from the sale of marijuana? For example, the state of Colorado, from what I understand, dramatically underestimated the revenue stream. And does that, does that money that the state that would, that the state would receive from the sales of marijuana, does that filter back to the municipality?
That's how the collection of, that's how the state tried to adjust their under analytical mindset of how much revenue would be processed. Their anticipation just with heart, one part of the pie of this accumulated revenue stream was nine million dollars to be dispersed to local road commissions throughout the state.
Okay.
That nine million anticipated was sixty three million dollars in a year.
So, but.
So that's where you have the jump from twenty eight thousand dollars to fifty six. That's how the state's taking that tax and funneling it back.
I see. Okay. So, so that money would not be earmarked to a specific municipality, to a township government or village or city. It would be earmarked essentially for road work.
At, at that.
At this particular point in time.
Yeah.
And so I'm just, I, I would, I guess I would be concerned that if, if we have the separate fund, but I don't know if I would be concerned because I'm not sure exactly what this separate fund would be for. But if, if all of a sudden the state had a windfall of some sort and Opina Township received two hundred thousand dollars and, and now we've got it in this sort of fund that we don't quite know what we need it for, but, but it's just accumulating and not, 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 not being able to necessarily be spent other than for what might be minor expenses along the way. So, but it's, it's certainly an interesting question.
Yeah.
And, and one that's worth exploring.
Just my thought right now is I would hate to take these funds and earmark them for a certain project or department and then need them and not be able to get to them and use them because we've determined that they can only be used for this.
Right. Well, and I think, I, I, I think the best course of action now is let the accrual process happen. Let it accumulate. And if nothing else, we can at least say that we as a board have worked diligently to improve our fund balance. And also we're navigating waters of not putting the burden back onto the tax base because now we long and short, this board will make a determination of what any expenditures will be or how it would be earmarked.
At any given time.
At any given time. Every two weeks we can make a motion, but as it stands right now, let's get our ducks in order. Let's make sure that we're utilizing the proper GLs. Make sure that we're accounting for appropriately. I can say that once the board made its decision to approve ordinance one fifty, we are looking at a potential accumulation, if everything goes through the planning commission well, of a potential one mil worth of revenue streams that would be not put on the tax base.
Because this is money that is different than other funds we get. My hope, thinking from a capital improvement standpoint, is these would be capital improvement funds, whether used for buildings, improvement of buildings, whether it be used for parks, whether it be used for bike paths, whether it be used for whatever, would be capital improvement funds that I would hope to see it used for because I see it as something that, you know, the board has, has decided is worthwhile to pursue through licensing these businesses. And so that's kind of my hope, but I'll just throw that out there and that's all I need to say today.
And, and time will tell. Let, let the market dictate and the planning commission bring forth recommendations. Right now we're, we're, it's good that we're having a proactive conversation about it. Because I would assume the floodgates will probably be open to some extent. And so
Yeah.
cases will be going to the planning commission.
Yeah. And then those fees will change and then this will be something we'll talk about in two years.
Let, let the market dictate it.
Right.
I mean, that was the whole conversational point as ordinance one fifty made its way through the planning commission is let's learn the lessons of other municipalities. And as business goes, let a free market enterprise work its own way out of any market. So I don't think there's any motions that need to be made in that. We can probably just report on it at a subsequent meeting of.
Let you know what I find out.
Uh, next item of new business is assessing department municipality annual service fee proposal. This is.
This, do you have me to?
Yeah, go ahead.
Nathan and I were just talking, the city allows people to go on their website and without a charge, look at.
All their, all their property, basically their property card. So anything that's pertinent to any parcel, they have full access to.
And the city does it without a charge. We are currently charging three dollars for that. We do not get any of that money. That goes directly to BSNA. It's not, none of it comes back to us. If we wanted to waive that fee for everyone, it would cost the township four thousand two hundred.
How much does it cost otherwise? What, in other words, what?
Right now that everybody has to pay. They have to pay three dollars and BSNA keeps that money.
All right. So, so if I want to look at my tax stuff.
Your assessment card?
Yeah. I, I, I can do that anytime, but.
You can look at your own.
But I can't look at somebody else.
You cannot look at anybody else.
Period or without paying a fee?
Without paying a fee.
Okay. So if we, so if we've got a forty two hundred dollars, we are in effect allowing anyone to look at anybody's stuff.
Well, and, and the biggest, exactly. And, and the biggest gap in why this conversation came up with Michelle Berg and myself was the one, I think the biggest transitional piece with outsourcing our assessing department is maintaining the highest level of interaction with our constituents. And this would be a nice bridge to span that gap. If somebody's not here to have that historic interaction, allow them the opportunity. And a lot of this isn't driven by resident, the resident is the realtors and the commercial activity. And so this would be another way of not impeding that process and allowing the best, basically customer service that we can without having a department in-house. Yes, trustee Reiner.
So I have a couple of questions that come out of that then. So you've identified the answer to one of them then, because I figured it would be more of a professional desire to look at it, but is it not available on the county website?
They charge.
They check?
They do.
They charge of us.
They didn't for a long time and then they resumed that.
Yeah.
A year or two ago.
They, they charge us, Russ. They will charge us for more than one Kleenex out of a box. So.
But there's less Kleenex in the box now, by the way. But the.
Oh, it's interesting because I thought you could just easily go up to.
Yeah, I go, I, I, last I knew, but I, not all that activity anymore in the business, but last I knew, I could just go on the county websites and find parcel property, see the, see the assessed value, the equalized and all that stuff.
You can get started. They'll, they'll give you the name, parcel number. There's ways to get there to tell you, yeah, this, these records exist now. Hey.
Oh, fairly new or?
God, must be.
For my purposes, I usually just need to put a name with the parcel number. So I, it's free for me, but if you want to take that next step, they'll ask, you know, set up an account.
Yeah. So this is, I, I think that logistically, this, this is a, a good thing to give consideration to. And it affords our, our general public and commercial activities a seamless means of getting the information. That's.
Is it your thought or, or Mr. Berg's thought that it, it promotes development in our community?
I, I think that anytime trustee Reinhardt, that you have any impediment or impediment, shall I say, to economic development, any hurdles that slow down the process are detrimental. And so if we can have some of the, the background information that historically in-house used to be taken care of in a, in a timely manner, this affords that individual access to their own full car plus whatever they need to, if they're looking to purchase home or outside residence. That's what we're getting a lot of, not even the commercial activity is, is people looking to move into the community. And so they're more familiarized with usually more larger metropolitan areas that this is already in place. And so we're getting calls of, well, why can't I pull up this card? And I said, well, and then it's an explanation and we worked it out, but how long, how many days went by when they looked to our website before they actually called?
So you said looking up their own, but you already, I thought stated, they can look up their own and get all that information without a charge.
Could. And what they used to do is, as it has always been for up until April one, Chris Lewis bent over backwards to, to serve NGEN and that department really bent over backwards. And so that's, that's one way some people, so we're going from a paradigm shift of immediate gratification to a process.
But the fees charged by BSNA, correct?
Yes, because right now it gets paid directly to them. Now, now we could actually maintain a fee if we wanted, if we wanted and still have full access.
Well, I guess my question is, but there's a distinction between if you look up your own and look up somebody else's.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
And so the biggest thing is not residents, not residential use as much as it is the, the commercial activity where I see the greater benefit. But it's a benefit nonetheless across the board to allow that person or individuals or business direct access to parcel codes.
And how do we fund this?
We have mechanisms for, this would be under what, eight oh one, not eight oh.
Professional.
IT. And we still have funded assessing department for IT services because we still have, you know, BSNA accounts. We have a lot of GLs that we made amendments to and pulled money out of, but there are certain functions in that department existing that we still have funded. And so it would be my recommendation to, if nothing else, try this level of licensure for a year to see if it's actually making a positive contribution to transparency in terms of economic development.
So let me understand. So it's forty two hundred, that's a flat fee. We pay BSNA over and above it and they, and that's then across the board that's accessible?
Yeah.
So it's not on a per use basis?
No.
Okay. So it's not an estimate of what the.
So that, it says a price is based on approximately seven thousand two hundred eighty four parcels. I, I assume they track those somewhere along the line.
Considering that we utilize their database, that's a pretty accurate number.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, I would, I would hope so. And so that wouldn't be a low ball number that later on, there would be a, geez, there was seven thousand look, there were eight thousand lookups. There's an additional four hundred dollar fee or something.
No, and it's not capped at how many times.
It's just enough.
That, that is how, how they arrive that fee.
They might change it next year when we go to renew it because of that, if there's a whole bunch of activity. But I make the motion.
We have a motion on the table? Well, we can come back to this. Motion and support to move forward with the municipality's annual service fee of forty two hundred dollars for the BSNA subscription to assessing. Further discussion?
My further discussion would be, I noticed the optional annual fee of assessing property sales search. Wouldn't that typically be what, what most people are going to want to look at when they're, when they're trying to do some kind of a search for economic development to see what the growth is, blah, blah, all, all the things that go along with that. And so if I'm, if all I have access to do is look up the, the usual information that would be found on a, on a, on a, on a property search, it's, but it's, does it not tell me when I go out there what the, what the sales of that property have been or any other property sort of in the area? Because if, if I were a developer and if I was looking to expand my operation or open up something in this area, I'd probably want to know whether or not there's been growth in the community or if it's been stagnant.
Would you like to address?
Well, I don't really have a lot yet, except that we did have Mr. Berg review this. And he suggested that we do not be assessing property sale search.
I, clearly that looks like it's definitely an option. I just wonder.
Yeah. That would actually make it on top.
No, I know. So, so I just wonder if, from the standpoint of those people that look at that stuff, whether they be realtors or other professionals or just.
Yeah. Well, and they have, I mean, and I haven't navigated that. I, I know that even in the assessing module as it stands, you have some of those economic drivers, sale price, et cetera, et cetera, unless upon sale, the biggest thing is now with title companies, I forget what the mechanism that they can actually lock up the sale price and that, so it's not public. It's a unique way of doing it, but it's been happening more as a way.
I appreciate why.
Um, well, yeah. So this is, I just see it as an opportunity because we're trying to be proactive. We've always maintained an amazing level of customer service in that department. And now to help with the potential growing pains and through this conversion, why not offer the best service that we can? Long and short. So we have a motion and support. Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Paulie.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Palavich, yes. Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Moving forward, the agenda is the Opina County Road Commission agreements. You have a, an estimate sheet, singular. I, I did a, a tour with Kirk, my annual tour with Mr. Gani on the road commission, looking at projects. And the list before you is fairly comprehensive as they always are. There are, as it stands right now, eight sites on the heavy maintenance project list that correspond to the individual pages. I made myself pretty clear. I'm, I do support all but one, and I would like to have a conversation about the one that I'm not in support of, and that would be like when you wrote twenty six hundred feet, half a mile off the gravel to the township line of Maple Ridge. I asked, and the reason that I guess I'm not in support of that as it currently stands is that there are no other matching funds coming from Maple Ridge. And this part. And this part of Lake Winyar Road services only Maple Ridge Township residents. So I'm always hesitant, because we also have two similar scenarios to driving primary roads into other municipalities. Haken being another one of the roads, Maple Ridge actually has improved. It's Maple Lane as it turns into Haken, coming off of sixty-five east west. But we have two miles of the stretch of Haken Road, and that is the border of our municipality. We've passed the Haken Road project over now coming into the fifth year. At this point in time, we need to put some money towards that. But at least Maple Ridge had fixed their end of it coming to. And there were no funds earmarked for the Lake Winyar project. So it would be my recommendation, unless we would like to have more conversation of which I'm always for, to approve the list minus the Lake Winyar Road.
Has there been any communication with, I'm sorry.
Just, having lived on Lake Winyar Road right at the end of the blacktop, so I had blacktop to my driveway and just a little ways past. You're right, there's only about four township residences, including County Commissioner Peterson, I think, if he still lives there. And, and one on the curve going down where the peacocks used to be, I don't know if they're still there. And then you get to Sitting Bull, and then I don't think there's much past that.
There isn't.
I, I mean, there's hunting camps and whatever, but.
Yeah, you have the, the Lake Winyar Club, you have three principal holdings, depending on which part of the Y that you take off of Lake Winyar Road. But then you basically just have principal access off the Lake Winyar side to Seven Mile Dam, of which is in Maple Ridge.
So all the people, so all the people, when you turn on to Sitting Bull, that's Maple Ridge?
That is Maple Ridge. So.
I don't, I don't disagree with you.
I mean, we can, we can always come back to that, but I would implore this board to take a ride out there. And then you'll understand, because it says, I told Mr. Gania, is why would we put money into this road when they're driving through the ditch anyways? It is a mess, and it would be, from my perspective, money wasted, unfortunately. I hate to say that, but the level of road destruction in that neck of the woods is quite horrific. It's, it's a, it's a mud hole, basically, so.
It's also a drag strip, right? You know, you spin your tires down the.
Get it loose on the gravel.
Get, get going on the blacktop and then you go into the gravel, is.
Has there been any communication or conversation with, with the Maple Ridge Board on their?
No, and, and, and they're, and I understand why they're not looking to fund that. It's because we take over all, pretty much all principal function of that part of their township currently. But they've pretty much earmarked the, any of their monies for their upcoming Heron Road project, which they have been doing for the past couple of years. So they're looking to pave that, which is, and I, I implore them to continue to fund that. Because we need, by FEMA standard, more divergence, more, more cross-connections to our primary thoroughfares. And, and Thunder Bay River is a geographical oddity that divides our community endlessly. So for them to improve that road to a hardened surface is, sets precedence over the less than fifty residents combined of Alpena Township and Maple Ridge Township residents.
So, one other question.
Yes.
What, if we, are we potentially hurting ourselves by, by not investing in, in a road where we have to take heavy fire trucks and stuff down?
Six of one, half a dozen of another. I would implore you to drive down that road.
Yeah, I have.
And ask yourself, what is that threshold?
Yeah.
Acceptability.
I haven't been down lately. I have been down Haken Road, and I was really surprised at how marginal that section of it was. But anyway, I just, just sort of thinking aloud in terms.
I mean, and if we're successful in a road millage, then we can come back to it.
Okay.
Um, we've, we've passed projects over for years to come back. It's especially given the restrictive nature of the amount of funds available for road projects currently. When I do these tours, I have to look at what is the greatest good for the small amount of money that we have? How much positive impact are we going to have to our residents and passersby, if you will?
Have you looked at an alternative project, you know, a, a Plan B here for a different road that needs more respect?
Oh, there are endless.
I know, I know. Have you got a specific?
Trying to work with one big project, potential road project that I've been trying to drive. And, and the townships funded several other projects to get Misery Bay into a condition of acceptable standards. It is a potentially federally funded road. It is not considered a primary road. The road commission does not want to make it a primary road. But when you look at the sheer volume of residents that we have from North Point Shores eastward to the lake and then north to Bloom Road, I never knew how many people lived back in there. And so Bloom Road is, by their standards, has been built up to a primary road.
All the way to North Point?
Yeah, it's a primary road all the way to North Point, which is also Lake State Railway easement and not even owned by the road commission. But all the residents out there, if you don't live, if you live on Elkajon Beach or south, you're not going to Bloom Road. You're, you're coming in to utilize Misery Bay. So I've been trying to fight that and look at how we can get that determined, but yes.
Bloom Road's that trail through the woods, isn't it?
No.
No, that's the natural trail. That is actually considered Hamilton Road.
Bloom Road's at ours though.
Bloom's a great road.
Yeah, so amusement park.
That's Bloom Road.
Yeah. So. The one that goes through the woods that you can't turn around.
That's a natural trail.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and so there, that, that's a whole conversation. You can't add stone, you can't cut trees in the right of way, you can't.
Oh, really?
It, it's, you can't do anything but drive two and a half miles an hour down. Besides, what everybody else does is drive fast and dump gra, garbage.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, there's, there's a ton of roads henceforth. I mean, we have to also give consideration, and I've been trying to get the conversation back up to the forefront of, speaking of bypasses, traffic bypass and restarting the conversation of the last conversation that failed. On, that would be a potential bypass from the end of Third to Tamrac Road. There's a lot of conversations that just die historically. So as we show continued growth, especially in the thirty-two corridor, we should also be having conversations of what is the best for, one, a school should never be on a one-way-in, one-way-out road. We should definitely understand that. But also with the, the rate of growth in the thirty-two corridor and the potential twenty-twenty-three roundabout project at Bagley, we need to look at constructive ways of actually alleviating the traffic concern and viability of the commercial corridor and residential corridor, including school, and having that conversation again. So I've started that.
Yeah.
That is the most viable. It only failed, well, not only, but it failed primarily because M dot, when it came out, Tamrac is not in line perfectly with Walter, which is on the opposite side of M thirty-two. So now with the road commission's determination that they're moving forward with roundabouts in our area, a roundabout would be an actual way of circumnavigate the ra, reason that that primary project failed historically. So.
Interesting.
There's, there's a million roads, they all need help. We just, we have to pick and choose at this point in time unless the people say, yes, we, we agree and we want to fund, which those floodgates are open. Because now it's, I'll, I'll vote for it as long as you're going to improve my road, which everybody lives on the worst road. So I'm, I'm used to those conversations. But, but I, I, I mean, my recommendation is all but Lake Winyar Road.
I, I would make a motion that we move forward with the two thousand twenty-two Alpena Township township estimates for a total of sixty-two thousand one hundred and ninety-two dollars and sixty-seven cents, which excludes the Lake Winyar Road project.
We have a motion on the table. Is there support? It's been moved and supported. Further discussion? And before I, I will need, I'll pass the, the work orders around. So I'll need to trustee signatures on, on all these documents as well, so. Any further discussion?
Could you repeat that figure again?
Those numbers?
Sixty-two thousand one hundred and ninety-two dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Thank you.
No further discussion, roll call please.
Trusty Pauli?
Yes.
Trusty Lappin?
Yes.
Clerk Flavich, yes? Trusty Reiner?
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby?
Yes, and thank you very much for the language of estimate in your motion. So. Moving forward, new item number four, which is the Alpena County Treasurer, the foreclosed properties, we get the first opportunity of written refusal for foreclosed tax properties. We've done this every year. This year, there was only, historically, there was only one property that was potentially entertained. And we, we, we did that dance and made the determination that it was not in the best interest of the township to explore retaining ownership of a parcel on thirty-two, given the potential environmental concerns.
That's a twenty-acre park?
That was thirty acres, yep. Give you a drive, it's not on this, this was last year. These, these parcels, I don't see any inherent value. It would be my recommendation that we decline the offer from the county to take over the parcels.
Well, may I?
Yes, by all means, Trusty.
So I, I, I marked the one that's twenty acres, because I wondered where it's at. I wondered if it's something we should at least have someone look at. Or, you know, and I'm thinking future development, future park, future something. But if it's, you know, if it's undevelopable, developmental, the, no, that's not right. Anyway, if you can't develop it, then maybe, you know, maybe it's not worthwhile. But it's on a private road easement, it says, and it's twenty point two acres, so I just wondered.
Yeah, I mean, actually, one of the, one of the, the properties that's on this list was brought for to this board, to me, two years ago by the owner, and that was the, the twenty-three North bundle. Because there's the acreage there of the two point four, that was its wetlands. And so how do you mitigate that? How do you, how do you justify that? But it would be my recommendation, that being said, it would be my recommendation that we decline the offer from the county to take over said parcels. So I guess I entertain a, a motion to notify Alpena County Treasurer that we are not interested in remitting the twenty-nineteen foreclosed tax properties as listed.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion on the table to decline the foreclosed properties. Is there support?
Support.
Okay, so we have a motion and support on the table to decline the offer. Any further conversation?
The only comment that I have, and this is not on these particular ones, but just, just a, I wonder, we've recently developed a brownfield authority. And I can't help but wonder if some of these opportunities that we might get, because we now have a brownfield authority, wouldn't be worth looking at into the future because of the potential for grant money and the potential for development, et cetera, et cetera. Would that be a viable thing?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's definitely a conversation now that, well, and I mean, there's, we can talk after the meeting. But yes, there is, that does open a whole nother corridor of conversation.
I didn't want to not state, state that, because I want to make sure that we're all understanding that those brownfields have some great benefit to us.
Yes, so on that, I also chaired the Economic Development Committee, a meeting, target meeting this morning. So, County of Alpena's brownfield authority was granted a one million dollar grant through Eagle for cleaning of the bus garage site. The city was actually successful in a six hundred and fifteen thousand dollar brownfield request for the APC site along the river. And so Alpena as a community brought in one point six million dollar plus aggregate of revenue for brownfield development out of, it's sixteen percent of the entire allotment statewide.
Wow.
So our community did a phenomenal job in terms of allocating available brownfield funds.
Same, same, same consultant, too.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we have, we have the right people in the right places. So we have a motion and support to decline the offer. Any further conversation?
Trusty Lappin?
Oh, yes.
Clerk Flavich, yes? Trusty Reiner?
No.
Trusty Pauli?
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby?
Yes. Moving forward to the next item of business is the maintenance agreement. We've been maintaining a maintenance agreement with the Alpena County Equalization Department since twenty sixteen. I actually took and asked Alan Burke if this is a process that he does. And he does, although being in its infancy of a conversion, he, he did suggest that maybe this is a discussion for downstream when some of, all the nuances get worked out in this country. But cost-wise, he said they're pretty comparable to what the county would do. But that's, that's a discussion for downstream. But I did throw it by Alan Burke, and he said, pretty much, we'd be looking at roughly the same cost. So he said, right now, if it's, if it's not broke, don't fix it. And they would love to have that conversation in a year or so, when they get more established, taking over our. So, that being said, we do have a maintenance agreement that we've always had with the county equalization department, and it would be my recommendation that we, we continue to move.
This has something to do with our, our tax rules, maintaining our tax rules?
Yes.
An update.
So the, the, the cost per parcel remained the same as last fiscal, a dollar eighty-five. But right now, we, this is our, this is our option to, to conduct this business.
Make the motion.
We have a motion on the table to move forward with the maintenance agreement and supported by trustee Paul. Further discussion?
Just one?
Yes.
On the Ted Summers letter, it looks to be a multiple of dollar eighty-five equals thirteen thousand three hundred and seventy-one dollars and eighty cents. But on the recommended motion, it's thirteen thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars and forty-eight cents.
Yeah, and I would say that we're going to be looking at the official language coming from Mr. Summers.
I would agree, so.
With those figures?
I just wasn't sure if we were going to use the recommended motion, but if we were going to, we should.
It looks like the parcel number is twenty to twenty parcels off. Ten, seven thousand two hundred and twenty-eight, and the recommended motion only use seven thousand two hundred and eight.
Yep, so I, my recommendation is we'll look at the numbers provided through the equalization department in this accord. At thirteen thousand three hundred and seventy-one dollars and eighty cents. Further discussion? See none? Roll call.
Clerk Flavich, yes? Trusty Reiner?
Yes.
Trusty Pauli?
Yes.
Trusty Lappin?
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby?
Yes. Moving forward in the agenda, we have a discussion of personnel committee alternate. Ms. Ellery Summers not being here, I told her that I'd kind of discussed this. It is her wish that she stepped down as the alternate from the personnel committee. And I, as the chair of the personnel committee, and also Michelle being a member of that committee, personnel committee is something where the unfortunate reality is things happen so fluidly that having an alternate is actually.
It doesn't work.
It doesn't. Things happen on a day-to-day basis so fast that it would take longer to bring an alternate up to speed for a discussion than it would be to actually appropriately address the quandary. So it would be my recommendation that moving forward, an alternate is not part of the personnel.
So would you go down to a two-person committee?
No, we still have.
We have cash.
Oh, okay.
We still have a committee. It says we tried to have an alternate. And it just, because cash and anybody that's not here physically on a day-to-day. It says we tried to have an alternate, and it just, because cash and anybody that's not here physically on a day-to-day basis, it, it's, it does add some, some complexity to it. But that complexity inherent isn't as demanding as the amount of time to bring a potential fourth person, which would then actually be an OMA violation, because how can you really bring some, a fourth person up to speed if they're not there with you all the time? So, I think we're all in an agreement that an alternate on the personnel committee is, and is not a viable option. Trustee Laffin?
In our personnel policies and procedures manual, does it stipulate that there's a need for a, an alternate? It does not, okay, I make a motion that we discontinue the alternate on the personnel committee.
Yeah, we have a motion on the table to discontinue the alternate on the personnel committee, is there support?
Support.
Moved and supported, further discussion? Seeing none? Actually, there wouldn't be a discuss, we're raising it. So, all those in favor of removing the alternate on the personnel committee signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, the same. Moving forward to building and grounds quote for doors, this estimate was provided by Dave Cameron, contractor that implemented our last newest door. This estimate is for the second keypad door that is rusting out of the frame as an exterior point of entry for employees, and then also a hardened of solid steel door going into the, the backside of the treasurer's office through the assessing department to fully secure the work that we've already accomplished with a bulletproof wall and service window. This would make sure that that is what we're, so what we're trying to do with buildings and grounds is, and as we were told by Deputy Lash when he did a site visit, is we have an egregious amount of access for public. And we need to narrow those corridors of access down from the general public. So it's, it's kind of our driving force to basically look at having this entire building into basically four different divisions, if you will. We have one secure, mostly secure, minus a door.
Treasurer's office.
The treasurer's office, yes. Then your, your common areas would be the front entryway, the boardroom, and this entryway to the side. We're also getting quotes from Meridian Contracting to implement a secondary wall that would actually block off this hallway and have service windows there, so that way you actually have three different spaces. And the only one that would be for public utilization would be the boardroom and the entry. Instead of having people walking.
Where's Meridian, what, where?
Meridian Contracting.
Yeah, where would they put this wall?
Here, just around the corner, I can show you, we haven't even gotten that quote.
Okay.
We're still.
So the access from the side door would still come in this way, but not down the hall?
Not down the hall. Yeah, we have, I mean, on a probably a weekly basis, I see somebody just walking down a hall, and then I have to find them, and.
And that's trying to keep the at-large trustees out of that area.
I think so, no, I, well, me, no. So, no, it was, it was a direct recommendation in terms of our site visit from Deputy Lash that we need to constrict access points. So, this estimate is, as I stated, this is for two steel doors, one that is for the keypad, both will be keypad doors, one for the exterior that's rusting out of the frame currently, and one to secure and harden the entire treasurer's department.
I assume we got more than one quote somewhere along the line, or no?
Right now, Dave Cameron is the only person that can get, besides, well, I could have, if we wanted to look at the number twice as high. This is.
Of course we do.
Well, and that's what, we have to look at what the market is. Right, right now, with the supply chain, he has availability for these two doors, that's why I added it to the agenda now.
Okay.
Is because if we don't take advantage of doors when they're available, it could be three to four months before.
That door could be closed, then?
That door would be sealed shut. So, it would be.
The treasurer's office? Used, oh, sealed shut, what do you mean?
If we don't jump on it now, that door will be closed.
Put a block, concrete blocks, concrete masonry units.
You just didn't hear the snare drum.
So it would be my right, this is Stripe while the iron's hot, and right now, if he has availability for these doors, he called last week, and they're available if we want them, so I add this to the agenda because having people even to come and do site visits is getting harder and harder, so.
The line items covered.
We have a motion on the table that was trusted fully to move forward with the quote provided from Dave Cameron for five-thousand-seventy-nine dollars and ninety cents. Is there support?
I support it.
Been moved and supported, further discussion?
Funds are coming from?
Building and grounds, do you? You know, we have adequate monies.
I figured you just knew that number.
This child of accounts thing is still this.
It's all, they're all new, we're relearning.
You're kidding me.
Yeah.
All right.
Building and grounds, is that Department two sixty-five, one oh one?
One oh one.
I got it.
Two-six-five, building and ground maintenance.
Nine thirty-one, building repair and maintenance?
Yep. So we have a motion, we have support. Could you read the GL for the clerk, because I did not read the bounty.
It looks like we have thirty thousand.
Yes, we have adequate. And we can always revisit this as we have those discussions with potential utilization of ARPA monies. But right now, we've, we postponed the exterior door three years, and it's, it's fallen. The frame itself is somewhat deteriorated, strengthened by spray foam. So, with that being said, any further discussion? None, roll call.
Trustee Reiner?
Yes.
Trustee Paul.
Yes.
Trustee Laffin?
Yes.
Clerk Flavich, yes? Supervisor Skibby?
Yes. Moving forward, we will be addressed by Ms. Nguyen in regards to our amp.
So, included in the packet is the final asset management plan for the wastewater pump stations. So we did a little bit of background on this a couple of months ago when the process started. Just to recap, basically, both operations in our engineering division perform site visits at each lift station, inventoried the equipment that was there, performed a business, a risk assessment and a condition assessment based on those. So basically, the condition assessment has to do with obviously the age, the, the condition of the components, and then risk assessment has to do with how critical it is, if there's redundancy, what the potential outcome would be if it were to fail. So, all these have been ranked accordingly with that. But the, the upshot is, you know, you can go through if you want to in detail and look at all the, the condition assessments is that some capital funds need to be spent toward the back of the document. There is an appendix D pump station capital improvement cost estimates. Those are based on today's dollars, which as we know are escalating rapidly and hopefully will stabilize. But if you look at it, you can see that all of the main lift stations were installed in nineteen seventy-seven when the sewer system was first installed. The expected useful life of those kinds of appurtenances are thirty years, so you are over your thirty-year useful life and into the point of potential failure. So, some improvements have been done on sort of a piecemeal basis, kind of reactionary to needs as pumps needed to be replaced, rebuilt, or other equipment failed. But this is a more holistic approach so that each station would be fully brought back up to a good working condition and a reliable state of operation. So, the, the final page of that shows what your full cost would be in regard to the, the improvements. All improvements, which includes the equipment, the labor, demolition costs, electrical costs, et cetera, would be a total of twenty-six, or would be totaled out at an annual cost of twenty-six thousand eight hundred. And then if you look at each of the, the pages in there, they have costs ranging from the, the main pump station at eight-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand down to some minimal cost for the Townsend Drive, which is a smaller grinder pump station of a hundred-and-forty-five thousand. So that's what they're looking at is a capitalized budget of, you know, ten years at twenty-six thousand eight hundred, I believe. The total cost for rehab would be a hundred and thirty, no, that's not right either. I don't, I don't have my bifocals on. No, that's okay. So basically, this is all work that will go toward the Clean Water State Revolving Fund, a project plan for twenty twenty-three, so that, that project plan would be developed and then submitted to Eagle, sort of like you did for the drinking water with an intent to apply, and then, you know, follow up with detailed project funding. Now, please note that this does not include any costs for manholes or sewer pipes in the ground. So, recommendation going forward would be that asset management plan would be developed for those appurtenances as well. And so it can be done in a couple of different methods, and, you know, if the board wants to pursue that, I can speak to our engineering group, and they can get you a proposal to pursue that part of it, so that it could also be included in any clean water state revolving fund.
And that was, that was, as we did before with Brian Raleigh from F and B Engineering, CAF and myself, we scored so well, and the time constraints being what they were between the drinking water and the clean water, we opted in this cycle to focus the energies towards the drinking water. But having this amp is a strengthening method, that's when we turn around and go file for the clean water, because then we can be very specific and reference our own asset management plan. So, we're poised to make another good request with the state revolving. But, so.
You talked about pipes in the ground and, and manhole covers, what is the considered useful life of those?
It depends on the material, and so that's the thing is, you know, there are varying materials in the system. A lot of this was installed in the, the seventies when transite or asbestos concrete pipe was utilized. This material, as we've seen with, you know, water appurtenances also, over time becomes brittle, and so it loses its reliability. So, those types of things, now if it were, you know, ductile iron or high-density polyethylene or HDP, those have totally different life expectancies. And so, you know, the, the engineers will look at, you know, an example of what that type looks like. You can approach it by performing a wholesale cleaning and televising of your system and actually putting, you know, a remote vehicle, remotely operated vehicle into the sewer pipes to actually inspect them, show where there are defects, and then get a more targeted approach to different things, or you can do sections of your system to kind of get an example for each of the different soil types or, you know, conditions. The manhole structures themselves are usually from that time period constructed of poured concrete, so those tend to be pretty reliable unless there's, you know, some kind of corrosion problem out in the system. So, that's why you do asset management, because we really don't know, we can only make an educated guess.
Are there any other questions from this one?
We, I guess, I have one more. Do we have failures in our piping systems yet?
In the sewer piping systems? We have not had any, so that, that's a plus. So, the, the question would be is that they would look at it and see if there were any causes that would show an imminent potential failure. The other thing that can happen with sewer pipes is that the pipe itself may not fail, but depending on how they are constructed, if they are joints that are pushed together, they can, over time, because of settlement, separate. Then you start to see root intrusion and other things into your sewer that can cause not necessarily pipes to fail, but can cause problems with obstructions in the pipe or, you know, sewer backups for residents. So, that's something that we also need to look at, is, is not even the physical condition in regard to the pipe integrity, but how well sealed the system is. The other thing is, is that since the township is metered and paying the city for sewer treatment, you want to eliminate sources of infiltration inflow, I and I, so that's another thing that can happen. So it may be worthwhile in those instances to tighten up the system just because the cost savings will be realized in lower sewer costs for treatment from the city.
You had a, maybe I didn't hear you, but you talked about a, a, an annual expenditure or something like that of around twenty-eight thousand?
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at the, the way they've got it laid out here, and that's basically if you were to, you know, pay for it and then have an annual budget, you know, that you were looking at a ten- or fifteen-year, you know, return on investment type of scenario. So, if you look at page, at the very first page of appendix D, it actually breaks down the replacement cost for each individual station, and they did not actually total that, but just on a rough estimate, one, two, three, probably a little over four million, somewhere between four and five million for all the recommended improvements.
So, so, if you've got a, if you've got a pump that is a three-hundred-thousand-dollar pump, how does twenty-eight thousand dollars? I don't understand that.
Well, if you were to take out a bond.
All right.
You know, that, that way, or, you know, conversely, you know, going forward, you're looking at what you would want to put into a capital improvement fund to fund those.
Got it, yeah, I, I hadn't thought, I, the idea of a bond or a financing agreement, so.
Yeah, well, and that's what, that's the whole purpose, instead of reacting with the, the drinking water side, is that it's better to have a known for budgeting purposes.
Understood.
So, yeah, yeah, that way it's not hearsay, there's no objections to it, nobody steps on it.
Makes sense, that clears up that in my funny little brain.
Yeah, it's, it's a different approach, the way they, they did that, and, you know, like I said, there is a lot of detail in the back part of this report that shows you what the cost would be, you know, kind of to do each individual station. And like I said, it does include things such as construction contingencies, engineering, legal, administrative, you know, financial, if you were to bond it, et cetera. So all those costs are built in because it's, as you know, it's, it's better to have a budget that is very inclusive and then potentially come in lower than to say, oh, heck, we forgot, you know, to count for X, Y, and Z. So they've accounted for everything in today's dollars, that's the problem. We're seeing right now is not only indoors, but in all other sorts of equipment, supply is limited and lead times are very long, and vendors are now giving us prices that are valid for fifteen days as opposed to thirty or ninety days.
The best one now is twenty-four hours.
Oh, my.
And henceforth, the inclusion of the new business item and that of a lot of IT equipment. Quotes are valid, so we actually should give consideration to our purchasing policy, because in today's economy, the potentials for taking time to, to get quotes, and we have to be realistic. And if some, certain things are available, it's either you act upon them, or you wait until you might have another opportunity to act upon. So, but that's our economy as it currently stands. Any other questions for Ms. Nguyen? Wonderful presentation.
Very thorough.
As always, uh, next item of business.
So we don't have to make a motion to buy, receive, and file this or anything?
Uh, well, you actually could, just to. I would entertain a motion to receive and file into records, the asset management plan is presented.
I'll make that motion.
With a motion available and support by trustee Laffin to receive and file the asset management plan, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the same. Okay, the amp has been received and filed. The next item of business, speaking of the amp, is an invoice quote from Word is Auto Repair for two-thousand-two-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars and sixty-six cents. These are for improvements of our existing blue truck. But the backside to this and why it's on this is we need this truck because we actually have the opportunity on our thirty-two booster station to save roughly, I'm talking with Mr. Mullen, roughly forty-five-hundred dollars of savings on one project. If we have the utilization of this truck, we can actually fix in-house with very limited funds. One of the two oscillating pumps, regularly, I think, pump one or pump two?
I believe it's.
Yeah, I think it is, well, so our thirty-two booster station has two, two primaries and then a third, an emergency flow, high-flow pump. And pump one has bad bearings, the, the cost to have a third-party vendor. Uh, take and fix that pump, uh, in my discussions with Mr. Mullen, uh, we're between roughly four and six thousand dollars. Uh, or we can buy actually a valve kit that they can do in-house for five hundred dollars. We just need the truck to do it. Uh, so it's my recommendation to, to fix, get this fixed so that we have full utilization and we can.
I tell you, already authorized repairs to.
We talked about it before. We never moved forward until, until now, we need to get it squared away and then we can. Yeah, well, in today's market is twenty-two hundred dollars is a lot better than forty thousand.
Better than any mark.
So, um, I, I would make a recommendation to move forward with a, a motion to move forward with the auto repair invoices presented.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion on the table to move forward with the invoices presented. Is there support? It's been moved and supported. Further discussion, just a call.
The work's already been done, right? We're, we're paying a bill.
Yeah, because we had an operative, I think, yeah, I think that the work. Cause we had a small window to make a determination of clearing a third party. Or having a five hundred dollar rebuild kit, yes.
This truck has got a winter or something or another that is not available.
Elsewhere, correct. Yeah, so this is, we can, we can address it downstream, but right now with these repairs. We have something that will be viable for the remainder of this, if not into next fiscal and look at what the market does. And make a sound determination of what we do moving forward. Right now with, with the costs, it. Unfortunately, you know, I sometimes hate to spend money at, at an old piece of equipment. But in today's market, this is the, the best money spent.
That's the one that has the sort of swimming, swinging dab.
It could swing, swim too.
Swimming dab.
Yes, so we have a motion and support. We'll call. Yes.
Trustee Laffin.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Uh, chief, if you'd like to stand to the podium, the, the next four items are yours, sir.
All right. Good afternoon. Mark Hanson, Fire Chief. I guess you have the budget adjustments, uh, that'd probably be on you, right?
So, yeah, we don't need your, just go hit, let's target the, the, the adjustments you're for.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, medical jump bags will go to item number eleven.
We need to follow the, so budget adjustments.
Right. All I did is request them to you. I didn't.
I'll splice this so that we can hop onto the medical jump bags. Uh, so in your packet before you are, uh, budget adjustments presented to, uh, myself and Michelle that we put in. Recommendations from the chief to, uh, fund some G Ls that were. At the latter stage of the budget development and GL creation, uh, that weren't even in our packet. Now they're created and we need to fund them. So before you are the, uh, the budget adjustments to afford funding of, uh, those G Ls. So, uh, it would be, it's the recommendation of the chief, uh, to move forward with, uh, the five budget judge. Budget adjustments as presented. Is there a motion to ban that? We have a motion on the table to move forward with the recommendation. Is there support? I'll support. So it's been moved and supported. Uh, further discussion to the budget adjustments presented.
These are all budgeted items.
Yes, yeah, like I said, the safety compliance, safety, that GL, the first GL nine six zero 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 zero. Uh, was something that Laura created, I believe. Right either before we adopted, they weren't in our package. So he would like to have, uh, them funded. So he's moving some money around. Uh, and then communications equipment, I believe, are the two principal new G Ls that were created. Oh, fire M E M S, right. Uh, so three, three G Ls that were created. So he's, we're just moving monies into those G Ls. Any further discussion?
We don't have any expectation between now and the end of this budget for any. Unusual building maintenance ish, issues coming up.
Well, I, I can't predict that, but I have talked to, I have talked to supervisor Skibby about, uh. We're having a lot of door issues, overhead door issues out on the north station here. Uh, I'm getting a quote to give to him, uh, possibly with some ARCA fund help possibly to take care of some of those issues. Uh, but I don't know any details on that until I get a quote back from, uh, from the, uh, various companies that I've called.
Yeah, and that's going to be a, a big conversation as we move forward with the potential utilization. I think we've had some, some. Up to thirty thousand foot viewpoints of where some of the projects and expenditures will lie. Um, being some in the, in the enterprise one, uh, with our asset out on thirty-two. Um, but yeah, there's endless issues we already know in this building. Uh, some of which, uh, are small, some of which are large. Garage doors, now that it's warm, turn off the heat. That way people don't run into them. We can get, we can get through it. But they are in need of repair at both stations, um, because.
Ones in the back need to be cared to.
Yeah, those are obviously going to be.
And, and, and right now with garage doors, uh, your three to six months out. Maybe, maybe. So it's, it's, it's there again. It's one of those markets is. When we get a quote, it may be a sole source provider and time is of the essence to respond to certain quotes because. You know, your thirty day window of opportunity and a lock-in price are days well gone. Uh, so that ship has sailed, so.
Just about any quote that we're getting in the fire service now is a ten day quote. They, they will not exceed past the ten day quote.
So, so we have, uh, budget adjustments. We have motion and support on the budget adjustments. Any further discussion? If not, we'll call.
Trustee Laffin.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Chief.
Okay, uh, now we'll go on to the, uh, uh, medical jump bags, item number eleven. Uh, in your packet, you should have, uh, there again, we, we had a quote. A reach out by one of my guys to get three different companies to get quotes for these jump bags. Obviously, we could not get anybody's company that would have all the things that this bag had in it. Uh, and our design here is to get our active first responders equipped first. Uh, which I have about seven of them that are, that are pretty regular. Uh, and I, you know, they show up to an incident right now. They have nothing, uh, with them other than their smile and good looks to whoever they show up. I'd like to at least be able to get these bags, which I had budgeted for in our budget, the budget hearing, uh, allotting for this, uh, purchase. I actually allotted up to, uh, two thousand dollars in that line item. Uh, and I'd like to get these, uh, jump bags ordered and distributed to our staff for a total of seventeen forty-nine sixty-five. And it is my recommendation that we, uh, proceed with that purchase.
We have a recommendation, uh, from chief to move forward with the purchase of seven medical jump bags for a total of. One thousand seven hundred and forty-nine dollars and sixty-five cents becoming on the G L two oh five three three six seventeen nine zero zero zero. Is there a motion to that effect?
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion on the table to, and support to move forward with the recommendation of chief. Further discussion.
Is this out of next year's budget or this year's?
The current, the current fiscal year.
All right, so I wasn't sure if you had made the budget adjustments for this. Okay.
Yeah, we had, we had budgeted for this site, this item.
Uh, trustee Reiner.
So how do you keep these bags? Updated. In other words, these are consumable items in the bags. How, how do you take care of that?
So each bag will be equipped with an inventory sheet. And if they use anything from the bag, obviously it has to be replaced. Uh, we will replace that and will, that'll be a part of our operational.
So do you keep a supply of the items that are in the bag in the background somewhere?
We do. We have a couple of medical cabinets, one at each station that are filled with various supplies. And then, you know, if time permits at the incident, we can oftentimes, uh, get a swap from the, uh, county EMS. Say, hey, we used a nasal can or we use this, reuse that. Can you guys got one? If they got one, they toss it to us. Or at a later point in time, I can call down there and say, hey, we used this. Can I get that? Sometimes that works out pretty good. Other times, if it's a small and expensive item, we, uh, will refund, refill that from our cabinets.
So if you're using a nasal can, you're. They also have oxygen with them. It's not in the bag, obviously.
No, so what these bags will be equipped with, uh, they're going to be the first response before our units actually get there. They'll be, uh. You know, equipped with, uh, blood glucose, uh, S P O two monitors, blood pressure cuffs. All the stuff for getting basic vitals. If an individual's having a difficulty breathing, there will be an Ambu bag in there so they can assist in breathing. Until our rigs get there with oxygen. We're not going to go through that expense of more oxygen tanks and regulators, uh. Uh, but. Right, at least our, our staff that's, are paid on calls that are going to come to that scene. They can at least start the basic, uh, vital assessment. So whoever else is coming, that's information they don't have to obtain when they walk through the door.
So do the bags have can, I mean.
Uh, no, they're, the bags do not, they're not equipped with, uh, oxygen, uh, related supplies. But any trauma related supplies, anything that could possibly be an immediate life threat. Uh, they can use the Ambu bag instead of using mouth-to-mouth or, you know, rescue breathing. They can use a Ambu bag that's included in the, in the, uh.
All the stuff that's listed in our packet is in the bag.
Yep, yep. And this company was one of the companies that had everything we needed in it. So that's, uh, that was our.
We'll keep that inventory solid and then get to work on the rest of the inventory.
So we have a motion, we have support on the table to move forward with, uh, the expenditure and the recommendation from chief. Uh, any further discussion?
Kirk Klavich, yes. Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Laffin.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes.
Okay, uh, thank you, folks. Uh, moving along here to, uh, pagers and portable radios. Uh, last October, I came to this board. Uh, the county has a matching fund that they had offered up and last year we had. Uh, a motion by this board in October to allow me to purchase up to two thousand dollars. Of radio or paging equipment for our, uh, staff. Uh, that was held over. Uh, they did not make that deadline and they wanted to. Bring it into this year. Obviously a supply chain issue, uh, and our new nine-on-one director wanted to roll. Last year's funds into a new matching fund. So the seven departments that are, uh. Eligible for this, they're going to be giving counting matching funds of three thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars and thirty-nine cents. For those, uh, departments. Uh, so that, that would be our, our gift from the county, if you will. Uh, and I. Used the math, made the, uh, got the quotes from the, the company that's won the contract. I came as close as I could, uh, were thirty-two dollars over that match, uh, roughly thirty-two dollars. Uh, the total profit, project cost for, uh, getting the seven pagers and two, uh, portable radios. Would be three thousand nine twenty-one eighty-three and I would take that expenditure out of G L two oh five three three six nine seven six zero zero zero. And it's my recommendation that we take the opportunity with the matching funds from the county and put that to good use or communications.
So they're giving each department, not just across the board, all the departments are sharing thirty-eight. You're getting thirty-eight eighty-nine.
Each year. Yep. And if one department happens to opt out, they'll resplit that money up, uh, amongst all the remaining folks that would want it. So that's, uh, it's kind of a gift horse, if you will, so.
So we have a recommendation from the chief to move forward with the Opina County match to the tune of three thousand nine hundred and twenty-one dollars and eighty-three cents. To utilize G L two oh five three three six nine seven six zero 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 for the, uh, purchase of. Seven, uh. Eight hundred pagers and two, uh, portable eight hundred radios. We have a motion on the table. Is there support?
I support.
It's been moved and supported. Further discussion.
Well, I just had a question. Did we already approve about half of this last year? In other words.
So basically this, this motion supersedes and sets that aside because now the, the new allocation of funds. Um, and who knows, maybe this will come back later, even this, this same fiscal if available monies are.
So are we getting the same amount of radios and pagers or are we getting almost double that?
We're almost, well, actually, we were going to be able to get, uh, four and a half pagers with the last total. Uh, so this year, not with this new allocation of funds, we're going to get seven pagers and two portable radios, which is. Going to get us in good, pretty good shape communication wise. And that's obviously the biggest, uh, hazard out there is the lack of communication. Yes.
This is a, another good example of applying for a grant. Um, I, I, I strongly suggest that we take advantage of the free money. Uh, that is out there and, and. Uh, I'm reluctant to continue to vote yes on something like this. I know it's needed, but I'm trying to. Teach something here and, uh, finding, uh, instead of going to a G L number. Uh, to, to access, uh, uh, those organizations, whether it be the community foundation. Or whether it be the power plant, or whether it be Presque Electric, or the, uh, first federal one, there's, there's ample money out there.
Well, and maybe that's a conversation that we can really dive in deep in fire committee. Uh, because right now currently with the, the last email and I, I had discussions with chief with the power plant grant cycle. Uh, chief provided me with a quote that was also one of the findings through our Myosha site visit, uh, for emergency egress lighting. So I'm, I'm kind of drafting that. I'm waiting on a quote for some cameras.
I saw.
So I will be submitting that hopefully here, if not the, by the end of this week, first part of next week.
I, I saw that and I, I'm inclined to think at least with the power plant, but that would probably be denied because it's, it's. Normal operating stuff. That would probably be better for community foundation.
Oh, yeah, and well for radios.
So.
But what I'm actually.
No, for the egress.
No, I shall be spot on by their application.
Okay.
I mean, I'm going to write.
I think it's one of the samples.
Funding cycle.
And trust, trustee Laffin, if you will, we are going to take every opportunity of any grant that I find a, uh, off. An opportunity to apply for, I will apply, like I did the plot, the power plan. Uh, supervisor Skibby wanted to fold some other stuff in with that, which was completely great idea. Uh, but we have full intentions of applying that, for that as our number one priority in the, uh, firefighter assistant grant. Through the Department of Natural Resources. So I'm planning on, because that's a high, a high score for that.
I totally understand. And, and beyond those D N R things, there are tons of, uh. Uh, entities out there that will, that would gladly give you their money.
Right. And, and as if I, as, as I learn of them, I'm trying to apply as, as, as much as I can for those.
So we have a motion and support to move forward with, uh, the recommendation for the radios to the tune of three thousand nine hundred and twenty-one dollars. Three cents to match Opina County. Uh. Barring any further discussion, vote office.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Laffin.
Yes.
Kirk Klavich, yes. Supervisor Skibby, yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next on the, uh, on the list here is that, uh, number thirteen. It would be a deck gun. And I guess I'll go into explanation here, uh, and discussion that supervisor Skibby and myself had had. Uh, when our trucks were initially purchased, they were plumbed for a deck gun. Uh, they were never, uh, equipped with a deck gun due to prices or whatever, uh, reason. Right, so, uh, originally I had budgeted for to replace the, to put two deck guns on our, our main engines. Uh, which I feel is completely necessary. Uh, however, we have our backup engine out at station three. Uh, that we're, that I've already put for a request in for asset disposal. Uh, when we have that opportunity, we're going to dispose of that vehicle. So what I've done is I, you know, I wanted to find out the validity of the. Deck gun that was on that truck. And when I was doing my research on that, we found out that that deck gun up there was actually broken. It's a old gun, uh, the gears were stripped out of it. So what I did, rather than us going through the efforts of purchasing two new deck guns. Uh, it was recommendation from, uh, Rick Brazil at R and R. He says, why don't we just fix this gun? Uh, and then buy an identical gun to it. So everything's interchangeable. So, uh. I don't know if there was, I heard some, something, so I stopped. I didn't know if somebody had a comment or not. Uh, anyhow, I, uh, if you're in your, uh. Pages, there should be a document like this on the cover. Uh, we have this particular gun minus this base. Here at the bottom, already on engine three. So my suggestion is, is that we fix what we have. And then the future, uh, board meeting of which I am trying to get quotes. Uh, anything that we look at is twelve weeks out, no matter what minimum, even for the repair parts for this, uh, uh, monitor nozzle. Uh, and to order ones twelve weeks as well. But my recommendation is, is that we fix the current gun that we have. That will be mounted immediately on engine two as soon as the parts become available. Uh, and then. When we get the opportunity down the road here, and I've got all the prices, uh, obtained in a quote. And then when we get the opportunity down the road here, and I've got all the prices obtained in a quote.
Yes. So with this, obviously barring the fact of if it's board approved today, it's plus twelve weeks out. My question is twofold. One, what is the cost of the new one for comparison?
Okay.
Secondly, is this include this cost from R and R, is that labor, everything on the truck ready to, to disperse water or is that just for the parts?
No, that's what I was told. This, this gun would be ready to snap on the top of engine two.
Why, why didn't we get a quote from R and R?
I actually did. I thought I put that in there. Sorry. Well, no, actually we didn't, because this is how I wrote this. I can get everybody a copy of that, but that. And I have an email that corresponds with a sixteen twenty-five, twenty-five to repair that particular deck gun. My apologies. I thought I had.
Cost of a new gun?
Uh, roughly for anywhere from four to forty-five hundred dollars.
Now let me ask you this. On the attached stinger two point O, you put down a, the stinger two point O does not include, or it says nozzle sold separately.
Right.
What is, does that in addition to that four thousand bucks or so?
No, so happy to know that we already have two different nozzles for these. We, we have the nozzles already. So.
And a stinger two point O will fit on our.
Yep.
Stinger one point O.
Everything, everything is supposed to be interchangeable. We'll move from truck to truck. And then this unit here is actually a ground based monitor. So let's say you can't get the truck in position to where that needs to go. It can be adapted to the ground and it's an unmanned monitor nozzle.
That was actually going to be one of my questions. So I had two questions. Well, now maybe three. Do I understand that the sixteen fifty-two on your motion or your recommendation is to repair and installation? So this sixteen fifty-two includes the installation?
That's correct.
Okay.
So engine two uniquely is already plumbed for adaption of this particular unit.
Okay. Then my second question is, is where is, where does this physically mount?
Right on the top of the truck.
On the top of the cab?
No. So just be, if you're familiar at all, and I can show you, be happy to take you out there and show you. Just behind the pump operators panel, there's a plumbed, I actually had on my phone if you need to see him, but.
No, that's okay.
So, yeah. Engine two is already equipped, engine two is already equipped with a extender pipe. So you can have the nozzle goes above the truck and does what it needs to do.
I just said on the, on the stinger two, it looks like it's on a ladder. So you've answered my question. Thank you.
Okay.
So this stinger that's on this truck someplace is going to be removed, repaired and put back on another truck.
That's correct.
Sixteen fifty-two.
That's going to go on our engine two at the south side station. Yep.
So have a working stinger.
That's, that's correct.
And then you'll put a new one on this new truck.
That's correct.
Not in this quote.
Not in this quote. No, I can't, I couldn't even get prices.
When we revisit that, I'll need a netty pen because I'll be stunned so many times. Oh, I'm clear.
No, I, engine one is plumbed a little bit different. So it's a little bit more involved. It's not something I can just go. Wasn't something I could just say, hey, I need a quote for this. There's different involvement with engine one.
So we have a recommendation from the chief to move forward with rehabbing an existing deck gun to the tune of $1,652.25 in GL two oh five three three six nine three zero zero zero. Is there a motion to that? We have a motion on the table to follow the recommendation of chief. Is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Further discussion?
Trusty Reiner.
Yes.
Trusty Polly.
Yes.
Trusty Lapp.
Yes.
Clark Flavich, yes. Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Thank you very much, chief. Any other questions for chief? All is at the podium?
I just have one other quick statement, if I may. Just, I know the board, I sent out a recent inspection that we had from our Myosha worker and our risk assessment manager that was on site during that time of that inspection. And we did very well in that walkthrough inspection. We only had a couple of minor things that were, you know, extension cords that needed to be changed. But other than that, I just wanted to let the board know that that was a very successful mission. And I want to reach out my thanks publicly to Mike Gombos for helping out with that situation and made it a lot. That transition really worked nicely between the inspector and himself.
Excellent. I have a question on that.
Sure.
So do we need an electrician to put in place whatever you can't use drop cords for?
I just got that quote today. I'm also part of what was actually found, the, the principal issue with the emergency egress lighting, I folded that cost into the par plan grant. And so that's actually part, I mean, literally this should be a slam dunk.
Yeah.
I, I can craft it well, but site specific, this cycle, at least with that grant actually meets. That's why I folded in that quote. I'm folding in actually ancillary cameras. And so it's, it's a very well crafted. It will be a pretty sound request. That being said, that the ancillary fine was the, and I've had building and grounds, I've been collecting products. And so the electrical extension cord issue, I just got that on my desk this morning. I mean, that was just over $600. So that'll probably be on an upcoming agenda.
Yeah, I just got the quote last night about five thirty, so I didn't have a chance to.
Yeah, I just, I tried to pull as many things, whether it's IT or billing related things into one logistical trip to make it more cost effective.
So that won't be covered by the grant.
No, not the extension cords. But the cameras and the egress lighting, which had a higher cost associated. Yeah, I think we're going to be almost to the cap of $5,000 in terms of that grant cycle. So it's going to be a pretty comprehensive asset. I'm moving, yes, I, I just wanted to make sure that everybody in the board knew that Mike Gobbles is part of what we get through our insurance.
Oh, right.
He's like a bonus that we get.
He's a good bonus. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next added item is the quote that you should have before you independently from Graham Motor and Generator Service. This is not all inclusive.
I got it. I just wonder where it was above.
So this is a quote for the generator here on campus, just behind my office and the building department outside. This generator, although it does function, this was one of our wonderful, as we'd like to always put it, free things from the state. And in my conversations, we've, we've been touching on this for a couple of years. Obviously COVID threw this through a massive loop and communications abound. We're here today. We have an opportunity. Speaking of, if you look, quote, good for twenty-four hours from yesterday. That's how fast these prices and things are changing. Now, what's included in this is everything but what's going to be a quote from John's Electric because Graham Motor cannot do the electrical connections per se. They can do ninety percent of everything except for put it to get together. So there will be a secondary part of this request, and that will be the cost of John's Electric to actually disconnect the automatic switch. So we currently have as an emergency shelter, the obligation to our community to provide electrical power in the instance of a natural disaster, et cetera, et cetera. We have currently a generator that has to have a complete redo of all the internal harness. And then also currently we have a manual switch to make power to the building if we lose power. This quote is for everything, as I formally mentioned, everything except for having the electric, electrician connected. This bolt will be, if we lose power, less than five seconds later, the generator will kick on and we are still in business. We have had in the past year, one instance, I believe, where we had a, a pretty massive power interruption. Four or five hours. And the functionality of, of our offices is obsolete at that point. So having, having the opportunity and not being dependent on any other humans for electricity. Because if the fire department's out, we have nobody to switch it over manually. So this quote is very comprehensive. It's actually less than the discussions that took place three years ago about the same generator. But this is a must for us to move forward. And that is at nine thousand seven hundred and seventy-three dollars and sixty-one cents. It would be my recommendation to move with this.
How many kilowatts?
This is a sixty kilowatt generator.
Sixty?
Six zero.
Correct. So it can probably charge one or two Apple phones, maybe.
And, and a Tesla.
There you go. Oh, well, that could be a revenue stream. But, but no, we got this quote yesterday. They have the ability to get it basically together and over. And it would be my recommendation, this has been a topic that we've been teetering on and trying to get resolution upon. And removing the human factor from this and having an automatic switch over is priceless from my, my position. Yes, Miss Wynn, yeah.
I would just add in regard to that is having Graham generator also knows the preventive maintenance repairs on the water, wastewater system generators and portable generator. And also the fact that not only is it a concern for the power interruption, having to have someone to manual switch over, but it is also a safety concern. When you have to have a human person do that transfer, you do have a potential for flash and back heat on that system. So putting in an automatic transfer switch also improves safety, especially for untrained personnel.
Yeah, which is where we're at. So removing all of us from that potential is a good thing. Yes, trust.
Oh, having had some household experience with putting in one of these, the, as I recall, the electrician expense was quite a bit because it took some changeover to, you don't just put a, a automatic switch in your
Oh, no.
fuse box. It's going to be some work, isn't it?
It's going to be a considerable amount of work. And who knows what.
I think my experience with the sixteen kilowatt was two thousand for the electrician.
Yeah.
Similar for the.
So this is in all, in all actuality, this is an all encompassed project. Once we get the quote from the electrician to look at the potential utilization of ARPA monies for this project.
Is this natural gas fired?
No, they're actually currently, this is a diesel fueled bottom belly tank on that system. I don't know if the, the natural gas conversion can happen with that generator. I know that our generator at the thirty-two booster station is natural gas. And I believe our generator at Michigan lift station is also natural gas, but those are the only two natural gas. Correct me if I'm wrong, I believe. Generators that we have in our system.
So it has a self-contained tank?
Yes, it has a belly tank.
How big?
I think it's fifty gallons, forty gallons. I, I'd have to.
I'd be interested to know, not necessarily for this quote, but I'd be interested to know how long it'll run a sixty kilowatt generator with fifty gallons of diesel fuel.
Well, we can, I can, when Graham Motors here putting things together, we can ask them exactly what kind of runtime and duration that would have.
I have some that are a lot bigger than that and they run about eight gallons per hour. So you can, you can do that.
Okay. So, so six hours.
Well, they're bigger. So that's what I'm saying. Is that maybe eight, four hours?
Yeah.
The only thing that I guess I would consider there is you can go with natural gas. You don't have to worry about treating the fuel on, on, on diesel. You know, having algae and different things like that, that could be a problem if you start outside. Well, you can go with natural gas.
I was actually going to make, ask the same question. Is this now, although we're like under the gun because of a twenty-four hour requirement, I wonder if, if we're fixing something that will become antiquated in a relatively short period of time.
Well, currently it's already antiquated because it's a paper.
Yeah, right.
Um, and honestly, the conversion to have natural gas can be done at a later date. The biggest thing is, you can always convert. And I don't know if that one has the capacity to be converted. I don't.
That'd be a good question.
So.
All right, well.
But at this point in time, to have automatic transfer is priceless. And if that means that we're hamstrung in utilizing diesel, then that's still better because right now it's, it's off, we got a stat, I know one stat's going to be coming from this winter and went off.
We got twenty-six and a half hours.
To answer your question, Trusty Reiner, a sixty kilowatt generator at fifty percent load would be two point nine gallons per hour and a hundred percent load would be four point eight gallons per hour.
So we got, we got a day to a couple of days.
Yeah, please. And so generally speaking, you know, that's far in excess of what we can do for routine operation of this building.
Yeah.
Trusty Polly. Has the generator been thoroughly checked that it's worthy of doing this?
So I actually, that was a wonderful question, Trusty Polly. I asked because I looking at, and I think we're all getting to the point of, is it really free? And in my conversation with Mr. Graham, who owns this company, he said, once this conversion has taken place, the way that generator was built, you can't buy a new one that would be as good as that. Simply, he said, obviously, the Fed spent, spent no expense in having John gear spared none. Yes, I don't know what I said, but it obviously wasn't all right. And so once, the biggest issue was the wearing harness. And, and that's what we have now. And so we lost the ability, there's only, I think, one individual in all of Opina that knows how to effectively run that generator. And that is unacceptable. And so having, just removing the human aspect and air potentials, this is something that we're actually required, Trusty Polly.
Do we also have a service policy where that is automatically taken care of, checked?
Well, that would be something that is currently, as Miss Wynn stated, they're already doing inspections of our existing. We can just add this to our list. They've already done one full inspection where this conversation started, changed all the oil, did all the routine maintenance.
Because we are going to have money, I hear.
No, no, and they have a reputation and when it comes to generators, that is beyond approach. I mean, they're.
Do they also start the generator? I mean, most.
They cycle, they'll put on load, they do load testing, everything with all of our generators to make sure that it functions properly. So the only moving part to this is the electric, the electrician's cost of which, given the consideration, we got this yesterday, I was actually fortunate enough to contact one of our generals that does most of our electrical work through DPW. He swung by, looked at it, I forwarded him this quote so that he can put together a quote for the cost for.
I have another suggestion for you on that, a fellow who seems to know generator, you know, generator hookups, it's electrical. So you can give maybe two.
I'm always open to see, save a little bit of money, especially once, tax dollars. So we have a motion and support to move forward.
Would you not have a motion or support?
I, well, I saw, I was looking at you. So I, at this point in time, I would entertain a motion to move forward with the quote, the quote presented from Graham Motor and Generator Services for nine thousand seven hundred and seventy-three dollars and sixty-one cents.
I made the motion.
We have a motion on the table. Is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Further discussion?
Funding, where's it coming from?
Buildings and grounds right now, but I would, depending on this is why I mentioned formerly is this would be, given the consideration that we are designated as an emergency shelter, this would be an easy slam dunk from my seat to utilize the potential ARPA monies. So.
I, I, I'll include that in the motion that if, if appropriate, our pro funds be used to, for this project. Includes the electrical bit.
And to the supporter, are you? Are you accommodating to?
Yes.
Okay. So we have a motion and support. Any further discussion? Then the roll call.
Trusty Reiner.
Yes.
Trusty Polly.
Yes.
Trusty Lapp.
Yes.
Clark Flavich, yes. Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Lastly, department reports. Any questions about the department reports presented?
I had one. I wanted to say happy birthday, probably, to the supervisor.
And I wanted to also say, do you really consider that to be part of your job description to get older?
I don't get paid for that one.
I also was kind of interested in the rooster issue.
The rooster, he has his obligation. He, I, I afforded him, as he has by state statute, through M DART, to approach and try to supersede our zoning mechanism of which. To approach and try to supersede our zoning mechanism, of which I will be contacting uh, the individual this week. Uh, following our uh, reporting obligations to see where he stands with the contact with M D R. Uh, and then proceed with our zoning order.
So this is an animal control issue of some sort?
You know, I control all kinds of animals, whether they be beaver, roosters, peacocks. I don't know, so we got a lot of animals. Yes, Trustee Paul.
I'd like you to tell us about how your panelists went on the M T A.
Uh, yes, so I represented the Charter Township of Alpena, was it last week?
It was two weeks.
Maybe two weeks ago, I was asked by Neil Sheridan, the Executive Director of M T A, to uh, sit on, uh, be a keynote speaker and a panelist. Uh, for an open forum at the M T A Annual Conference. Um, it went well. I drove down, uh, I sat with kind of a, there was four people on the panel. Um, kind of a mismatched group, but a, a wide variety of, of communities, whether they be metropolitan areas. Or extremely rural. Um, I, uh, one of the ladies was the clerk out of. The furthest west township in the Upper Peninsula.
Oh, wow.
Um, and so it was, it was a good cross panel. Um, we, we talked about a, a lot of topics. Uh, it was centric probably to the struggles of the conversion between general law and charter. And, and where do Charter Township stand in promoting growth, sustainable growth? Um, of which I expect uh, an invite uh, from Mr. Sheridan. Uh, so that hopefully, uh, because they do not, after their financial department contacted me, they will not pay for a mile. But they will probably give us a, an opportunity to have a free uh, annual uh, pass for next year's annual conference. Um, so.
One.
I'll be a panelist on like six other ones, and then I can get you all there, but. I can always, I can always drive a, a little rental car so fast. Um, so it went extremely well. Uh, it was a good opportunity. I think the biggest thing that we can take away from it is. Uh, we are on the radar uh, of a lot of people in the state. This morning, I sat uh, and gave testimony to uh, a Senate Committee for Local Government in support of House Bill five three eight six. Uh, which uh, was written by uh, Rep. Allen on regards to um. Public Act uh, one thirty-three of nineteen seventy-two, and that is uh, directly correlated to Special Assessment Districts. Uh, which actually, we created the amendment. Um, this was a case that was brought before this board, uh, previous of Fitzgerald Lane Request to Explore the Opportunities of Utilization of a Special Assessment. District on a private drive. Uh, the constraints to the public act in which we utilize for special assessments did not afford the flexibility. So this amendment to the public act would allow uh, private drive residents to have a greater level of flexibility. And the potential utilization of uh, Special Assessment Districts for road improvements, et cetera. Um, so we are on uh, Lansing's radar firmly for the positive steps that we're taking with sustainable growth. Um, so I, I commend this board in its entirety, and I was proud to be a representative of the Charter Township of Alpena in Lansing. Um, cause I see it as if the Executive Director of M T A calls you personally and asks you, you say, how high? Because we're getting, so it was, it was a good uh, trip. Uh, conducted three Zoom meetings on the way down. Uh, didn't get pulled over, didn't hit a deer, and I think conducted about twelve calls on the way back. So on all, a very successful trip. Um, thank you, so, no, no, I think we're, we have a lot of positive things going right now. And momentum's on our side, so let's just keep it going. Any other questions to any other department reports? Seeing none, this is the second opportunity for public comment. If there's any public comment online, please use the bottom pass bar to raise your hand. Or send a message so that we can identify you and your comment. Seeing no public comment online and none in person, uh, is there any further discussion for the department board? Yes.
Um, I just wanna say that I'm still looking for election workers, so if you know anybody, we did run the end of paper and could get two. But we need approximately eight more.
Yeah, I'll talk to you both. Okay.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
Oh, thanks for representing this.
Yes.
Appreciate that, uh, work that you did on the cuff.
We're uh, we're on this for the right reason, and I am to make my hometown the best it can be. So if it's as easy enough of uh, crisscrossing the state for an afternoon, then consider it one.
Yeah, nice job.
Um, I would entertain a motion uh, to adjourn at this point in time. We have a motion on the table to adjourn. Is there support? Or it's been moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, uh, all those in favor of the adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Meeting adjourned at uh, twelve fifty-six.